Town of Maryville Town Council Meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. In vocation Reverend Rick Bolshman from the Trinity Memorial Lutheran Church.
On behalf of the congregations of Maryville, let's pray. Heavenly Father, at this time of the year darkness can add a sense of burden to the perception of time, shortness of days heightens our awareness how quickly time is passing. As our calendars fill with added work and holiday commitments help us to remember that our time is your gift to us. Therefore grant us calm hearts and minds to do your service. Bless these men and women as they administer the town governance. Give them insight and wisdom, energy to do their work. Bless this community in our neighborhoods with industry, good things, jobs, and brotherly love. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic of which is standing as a nation under God, individual of liberty and justice.
And also at this time with Thanksgiving two days away, we cannot forget the people of Washington, Illinois, our neighbors to the south in Kokomo, Rensselaer, and other communities that was hard hit by the tornadoes. And sometimes even though many of us have piles of leaves and cracks in our driveways and whatnot, that is so minor compared to what these people are suffering. Consent agenda. I'm sorry, roll call. Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Here.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Garalcheck. Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Whiting.
Here.
Miano.
Here. Let it show six council members present. Moving on to the consent agenda, accounts pay up of registered voucher approval November 26, 2013, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes of November 12, 2013.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance. Councilman Garalcheck, does anyone have anything on their budget and finance? Seeing nothing, public works, Councilman Pettit.
Thank you, Madam President. Last Wednesday, ladies and gentlemen, we met in a workshop setting and as all of you know, I'm the NERC C Commissioner for Maryville. December 12th, the full commission of NERC C is going to decide whether or not to include the Ileana Expressway in the 2040 long-range transportation plan, which is one of the first steps of many. And I need to stress that this is only approving to put it in the plan. It has nothing to do with the financing, has nothing to do with how it's going to be built, the acquisition, you know, all that stuff. It's just to put it in the plan, the vote has to be done. NDOT is requiring that NERC C, as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, do this to make it eligible for NDOT funds and/or what they're calling a public-private partnership, which is in essence a tollway, getting investors to invest in this corridor in Southern Lake County. With that being said, at the workshop, we had Jim Pinkerton from NDOT come through, and I believe his name was Jim Early. Was it? Was it Jim Early? Jim Early from NDOT came, explained, you know, exactly what's going on. I tried to enlighten the rest of the council. And as I've said many times, you know, I have my own feelings about it from an economic development standpoint, but when we cast this vote, it's for the town of Maryville. And if they go to a weighted voting system, the town's vote may have a little bit more -- it does. I mean, it's by statute, it has more weight than, for example, a Cedar Lake or a Griffith would have. I want to make sure that all seven of us are on board and that we had an opportunity to air questions and our opinions on this. So with that being said, Madam President, I would, based on the workshop, I would make a motion that the town of Maryville vote in favor of adding the Ileana Expressway to the NERC C 2040 comprehensive plan with the caveat, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to have to ask Bruce to sub for me that day. I have a work conflict that I cannot get out of, and I'm going to check and make sure he can proxy vote for me, or I'll just, we'll just quote-unquote "send it in" to NERC C on behalf of Maryville based on what the vote is tonight. So that's my motion, Madam President.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion?
I would note, Madam President, that there was a letter that was sent to me, I believe it's, I guess, as the NERC C Commissioner, or to the -- actually to the Maryville Town Council, from a Sandy Linden. And she read a detailed statement at our November Transportation Policy Committee. She asked to have it sent to all seven of us, so I had Stacy provide that to you at your place, so you can read her comments, just so it's on the record that we provided it to you guys, so.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
No.
Garalcheck, I think, Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Yes.
Miano.
Yes. Motion approved, five to zero. I'm sorry, five yes and one no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know, with Bruce being on vacation, I don't know where we're at leaf collection-wise. If anybody has any issues, I got a phone call before I came in here that I'll check with Kevin tomorrow on the schedule, but I don't know if anybody's got any questions on leaf collections. The question was, they hadn't been into Chapel Manor in two weeks, so I got to look into that one for a very influential resident over in Chapel Manor.
I was told by Bruce that he would make another collection.
A pass.
I know, it's been late, they, it's taken a while for the leaves to come down because of the weather.
They took time issues.
Yeah, so, other than that, I don't have anything on the public works, Madam President.
Okay, very good. Council affairs, Councilman Span.
No report.
Under personal policy and employed benefits, Councilman Garalcheck in his absence, do we have anything on their personal policy? Seeing nothing, public safety, Councilman Whiting.
Madam President, I only have one thing. On December 10th, 5:00 PM before the next council meeting, I'd like to call executive session, public safety with the town council only, for collective bargaining stretches. And that'd be at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, December 10th?
Yes.
Very good. Anything else on the public safety?
Yes.
Okay, I have one thing to read in, please. It is to patrol Commander D. Kajurna from Sergeant Burzak, a reference of a commendation that was dated October 9, 2013. I would like to make you aware of case number 2013-2170, in which Officer M. Panuka, number 332, and Officer C. Minchuck, number 279, arrested three suspects involved in multiple burglaries. The reporting party observed suspects running out of an apartment at Hickory Ridge carrying a TV and other miscellaneous items. The men placed the items in a gray and maroon Chevy Caprice four-door bearing a temporary license plate in the rear window. Officer Panuka, maybe it's Panika?
Panica.
Panica, I'm sorry. Officer Panica and Minchuck obtained information at the scene and a detailed message was sent out to area departments. Acting on the information, Hobart Officer Kenneth Williams observed the vehicle at 37th and I-65. Officer Panica and Minchuck assisted Officer Williams in conducting a traffic stop at the 4500 block of Vermont Street. The three occupants of the vehicle matched the description of the suspects, and the three were arrested for burglary. Stolen items were also recovered from the vehicle, including a J acoustic guitar which was unique to one of the burglaries. The vehicle and subjects are suspects in a Hobart burglary. Both officers conducted a criminal investigation and followed leads to obtain essential suspect information and vehicle description. Their quick actions made it possible for Williams to be on the lookout for the vehicle and made the stop which led to the arrests. There have been several burglaries in the same area, and it is a multi-jurisdictional problem. The officer's good police work along with excellent observations led to felony charges on three individuals. I believe that both officers should be recognized for their efforts, and I am recommending that they be awarded a Level 2 commendation. I would also like to make you aware of the great teamwork of Officer Williams of Hobart Police Department, who also deserves credit for his contributions to the arrests. Respectfully Sergeant Nick Burzak, with a PS from Chief Petrush, a job well done. Okay, moving on, Parks and Recreation, Councilman Span.
Yes, under the historic ordinance, I'm going to have a little discussion. We'd like to set a early December meeting for the, that's for the park properties that were sold at auction. Oh, right, right, right. Last Tuesday, or last Thursday, the 21st. That's the purpose of the meeting, Councilman. Right. We'll schedule one.
All right. Anything else on the Parks and Recreation? Environmental Affairs, it's Councilman Garalcheck's, but he is not here. Anyone else under Environmental Affairs?
I guess I'll go ahead. We're working very hard on all the logistics to prepare for our move into the Stormwater Resource Center. And that's going to be taking place later next week, from Wednesday to Friday, so it'll be officially in the building. Just let you guys know that the lights are on. They have to stay on for a while, that's part of the break-in period for the lighting system, so you'll see them on for a number of days, so it's not that we're forgetting to turn the lights off, it's that, that's part of the process. According with Lake County Data Department, we're submitting the fee lists for the 2014 billing for our stormwater, so I have to comb through over 13,000 parcels and make sure everything's accurate, and then I submit that to them, and then that'll be on the tax bill for next year, and that's how we get our revenue. I also received notice from the Indiana DNR that our Tree City US application was accepted, and therefore Maryville will continue to be a designated Tree City for the year 2014. Robinson Engineering still working on the drainage plans for Southmore Park. Yesterday I surveyed Madison Ditch, and I'm still waiting for quotes for contractors on chlorine and snagging within that area. Had a ice wagon meeting the other day, and one of the interesting aspects of it was the new data that Lake County has for LiDAR, that's a GIS layer, high resolution, and from that we can extract some very unique layers through that technology, like impervious surface and land use cover and things like that, that's much more accurate than anybody has today, so they're willing to share that with us, and we're willing to take it. So, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Under Elections and Public Relations, I have no report, but I do want to praise Dorinda and her daughter Beth for doing a phenomenal job on decorating town hall. I also understand that you ladies made scarfs for all the children. I don't know, where do you find time?
Not just children, Madam President.
You got one too, Sean?
Of course I did.
Good.
Got my picture taken with Santa, too.
All right. And candy bags also.
I didn't take a candy bag, Madam President.
You didn't? Why? Too embarrassed? He did, huh? Yeah, he did. Again, thank you very much.
Madam President, under your committee, I just want to let the rest of the council know, to Chief Juergen, Chief Petrush, congratulations to Kevin Wright, was this year's firefighter of the year. And Joe, I'm going to mispronounce his name, I'm sure Joshua Miskus?
That's correct.
Miskus was the police officer of the year at the annual gala, so those guys, another pat on the back to those guys' chiefs.
Wonderful. Anything else? Nope. All right, economic development, Councilman Garalcheck is in here, do we have anything to report on economic development from anyone? Seeing nothing, utility liaisons, Councilman Pettit.
Well, lo and behold, Indiana American Water had another water main break on Broadway. And lo and behold, they're finally going to replace the water line along the east side of Broadway from 80th to Deer Path, so unfortunately those residents were inconvenienced, got some phone calls from, you know, water in the basement and that sort of thing, but they seem to be resolved to replacing that. They say they'll be out by the end of the year, so unfortunately, and I know this gentleman, he's a friend of the families, not only in Ward 6, but he lost a couple of big trees out there, that one White House, they really, it's unfortunate, they butchered those trees and took them all the way down, so.
There are replacement trees for every.
Are they replacing them out down the line?
As part of the plant, yes.
Are they? Those two were big in Dan Dockweiler's front yard, man, I feel bad for him, but I guess it is what it is.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're replacing the line, so that'll be done by the end of the year.
Maybe mine'll be next. There's hope.
Okay, under Town Government Reorganization and ADA Compliance, I have no report. Going on to the ordinances. Ordinance 1351, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the casino fund. The following sum of $250,000 was not included in the fund.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion. Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Baron.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Aye.
Miano.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordinance 1352, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the town to extend the maturity date of certain outstanding temporary loan tax anticipation time warrants, and to make additional temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of certain funds of the town and certain departments thereof. Authorizing the issuance and sale of additional temporary loan tax anticipation time warrants to evidence such extension in loans, appropriating and pledging as a sufficient amount of the revenues anticipated to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon, and all matters related thereto. No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Baron.
Aye.
Pettit. Yes.
Whiting.
Aye.
Miano.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Second readings, ordinance 13-36. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, establishing a historic preservation commission within the Town of Maryville.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we have any public comment? Public comment? Public comment?
And Madam President, members of the council, the version that the council is voting on, on second reading, has the date in the upper right-hand corner of the front page, November 26, 2013.
Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Garalcheck, I mean, I'm sorry, Hardaway.
Yes.
Garalcheck, absent. Baron.
I abstain with comment. I think until we can give raises to the town employees and get our police department up to staff, I feel should we take care of our essential services and then look into establishing a historic preservation commission when we have the resources availability to do so.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Aye.
Miano.
Yes.
Yes, it's six.
Sorry.
Yes, it's five.
That's right. Motion approved, five to zero, with one abstention. Ordinance 13-48. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Continuing Education Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2013, not included in the current budget. The following sum was not included in the 2013 Police Continuing Education Fund, a total of $12,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Baron.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Aye.
Miano.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Is there any public comment on ordinance 1348? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, ordinance 13-49. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within certain categories for a decrease of $17,700, an increase of $17,700.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Baron.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Yes.
Miano.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordinance 13-50. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within certain categories for a decrease of $3,580, increase of $3,580.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Baron.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whiting.
Aye.
Miano.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to resolution. Resolution 13-29, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the general fund for an increase of $1,727, a decrease of $1,727.
Motion accepted, Madam President.
Motion by Councilman Span, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Motion, uh, motion, Resolution 13-30, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Maryville Fire Territory Operating Fund for a decrease of $60,000 and increase of $60,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion? All in favor, please say, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-31, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Maryville Fire Territory Cumulative Fire Equipment Fund, decrease of $25,000 and increase of $25,000.
Motion accepted, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Span, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-32, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the general fund for an increase of $844, a decrease of $844.
No move.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-33, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the general fund, an increase of $4,200, a decrease of $4,200.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-34, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Mississippi TIF Fund, for an increase of $60,000, a decrease of $60,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-35, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loans, for a decrease of $94,000 and increase of $94,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution number 13-36, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing a temporary loan to fulfill monetary requirements, a decrease of $54,000, increase of $54,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-37, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Stormwater Utility Budget, for an increase of $150,000, decrease of $150,000.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion?
Correction, uh, motion by Councilman Span.
Okay, sorry about that. Just let me change it here.
You gotta change your voice.
Okay, yeah, you gotta toss it a little higher. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-38, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within certain categories for a decrease of $8,300, an increase of $8,300.
No move.
Second, Madam President.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion?
Keep talking.
There you go. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. BCA Actions. Petitioner Delores and Chris Steele, please come up to the mic, please. The owner is Delores and Chris Steele. The request is a special exception approval. Purpose for a healthcare training center school. Location 5770 Broadway. Zoning is a C-2 community commercial. Case number Z41E13-1013, for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. The BCA was approved with a four to zero, with one member absent. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, we talked about lighting.
Lighting in the back.
Yes, there is lighting in the back, I have pictures. Thank you, sir. That's going to be enough to illuminate the back.
Of high.
That's high-pressure sodium.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Welcome to Maryville, and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Our next petitioner is Veterans Cafe and Grill. Owner Kimberly Trichish, over here. Could you please come up to the mic, please?
I have a seat behind Bill.
I know.
I have a seat behind Bill.
Hello again.
Hi.
Good evening, how are you? Real good. The request is a special exception approval, purpose for a restaurant, location 7805 Taff Street, West 81st Avenue B and C, zoning C-2 community commercial, case number Z42E14-1013, for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only, with a limit of seats to 60 only for the restaurant. BCA approved, four to zero, with one member absent. Do we have any questions? Any comments?
Second.
I'm sorry, motion?
I motion, I second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
And Miano?
Yes, welcome to Maryville, and welcome to my ward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And good luck, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, I probably should have asked this, and I apologize, I was just looking at Rich. These two that we just did, gentlemen, are with the conditions under the staff report?
Yeah.
I would assume, is that okay, Mr. Buscemi?
Yes, and that should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, just for clarification.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Sean.
Hey, do we have any old business? Any old business? Seeing none, new business? Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, announcements? Stormwater Management Board Meeting, December 3rd, at 4:30 p.m.